All right. Good evening. Welcome. Please join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the liberty of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join for a moment of silence for our fallen servicemen and women. Thank you. So we're starting off the evening, this meeting with a citation for a village employee. The village is lucky to have many wonderful employees here working for our community and we're grateful for all of them. And one of these individuals was in the news recently, which you may have read about. And he was coming to work one morning and saw an abandoned dog tied to a pole. And he, rather than driving by or making a phone call, he pulled over and he stopped. He made sure that help came and he saved that dog who's, I'm told, has now been adopted. So, thank you. We want to recognize you tonight. If you want to come up for a picture, thank you for being a great employee and going above and beyond. Want to come up for a picture? Thank you. Wonderful story. Do you guys want to join for a picture? All right. So we'll move on. The next item tonight is quick resident comments, which we began now a while back. That is for residents who are unable to stay for the whole meeting, have someplace else to go. Perhaps the gazebo concert or someplace else, but would like to say something to us. So they're limited to a minute each. If you have a quick comment, you can come up to the podium.
Yes, my name is Ellen Monahan, and I would like to address an issue that is of grave concern to all the seniors who use the senior center. And I would implore the board to go and look at it yourself. The floor there is totally unacceptable, a great risk for a senior to fall. It is buckling badly in many areas throughout the building. The worst place is in the back where we actually have to move tables so people don't have to move around when we're playing bridge to go through that part. I understand it's worse in the summer because of the humidity. There are also strips that have been put down that are of a danger to seniors who are on canes and walkers because they could trip over those strips. I just want to know what the board is willing to do to address this situation.
So it is something, thank you for coming. It's something we have been made aware of and we are working with the staff to decide the best path forward.
The floor had to be replaced. It's been, the attempts to fix it have been numerous and they have all failed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
The reason I'm speaking tonight is I want to thank this board for helping Say No to the Casino fight this horrible thing that's happening to our area.
Just name and address.
Mary. Bruce has been there. Judy has been there and I've seen Vinnie there. And I have to say, it makes a difference to our organization that we have such support from you. The fight is not over. I urge you to be really aware of the transit situation that I see coming our way. It'll really be a circus train. Trust me, that is going to come. The Covanta plant is ceasing operation shortly as far as transporting the ash from Westbury to the Brookhaven landfill. How are they going to do this? Probably via train. And the reason I say this, the sands is going to try to mitigate the problems we have with pollution. And they're going to say, well, gee, you know, we'll have a train come. We'll cut down on, you know, the automobile traffic. And this is just the way I see it. I've been following the transit story since January 2023. Mary was on that call. George, my husband and myself, we listened. And when the hub came up where the Colosseum is, oh, we can't talk about it. I don't trust these people from here to there. And I just think, you know, we need your support to fight these people because the payola, we all know that. There's too much money changing hands and we really have to stop this. And the gambling problem is the drunk driving. We're going to have the Garden City Police probably having, you know, traffic gates up to keep people out of the village. I know it sounds scary, but I don't trust these people. And we've been doing this a long time, so we have to remain vigilant and, you know, keep in touch with our group. Most of us are from Garden City. We just met the other day. We're energized. We're not defeated and we will fight to the bitter end. Thank you.
Thank you. That was for the record and for the other card.
Good evening. My name's Anthony Agrippina. I reside at Three Keaton Place in Garden City. First and foremost, I would like to commend and thank the Garden City Police Department for everything they have done and everything they continue to do. Anything that I may say in no way reflects on the Garden City Police Department. I've lived in this town for about 20 years. I likened it to living in Mayberry my entire life. It's a great, it's the best place in the world. But lately, on Friday nights, Seventh Street is a debacle and it's dangerous. In the last year, I've lived in not the best of places maybe when I was younger, but now I think it's the best place. In the last year, my family's been evicting of a bike robbery, which of course the Garden City Police got the bike back and delivered to my home. That's why I commend them for it. My wife had a pervert expose himself to her about four months ago, walking for exercise in town at 9:30 in the morning. You guys got him as well.
Wow.
Friday night, my 15-year-old son is on Seventh Street and gets accosted by 20 teenagers, which I believe the police department is aware of. I've been speaking to Detective Hennessy. I didn't realize how bad it was until I saw the video. It's out of control and probably beyond the ability of the Garden City Police. I mean, I'm told there's 400 kids there on a given night. I just drove down Seventh Street now. It's one of the reasons why I moved here. You could sit outside, have something to eat. It's great. When I made the offer on my first house, we went to Leo's when my wife was pregnant and we ate and we celebrated. It's nothing like that anymore. I mean, I don't know what you do, how you shut it down. The only thing I could think of is some type of inordinance. Shut it down by six o'clock, seven o'clock. You can't have teenagers. They're on a TikTok chat where they're all coming from all over. And I got to be quite honest with you. Our Garden City boys are just that. They're boys. They're mild, though they may not think they are. They're no match for these kids coming into the community. My son walked away getting spit at and something thrown at him. Not that bad. One of his friends got punched in the eye. Another kid got punched in the back of the head. One kid's iPhone got taken and thrown away. They were asked to empty their pockets, which they didn't do, which I think they were foolish not to do. And I do not in any way blame the Garden City Police for this because they're moving the kids. They're pushing them from one end to the other and they're minors. My question is, how do we resolve it? Do you bring in a SWAT team, a paddy wagon? Do you put in some type of a curfew?
Thank you for coming and sharing this. I join in applauding the police department for all of their efforts and.
They're amazing. They're amazing. I want this to reflect in no way anything bad on our first responders.
We're working hard on trying to figure out what we can do to address it as soon as we can. So.
Thank you. But I think it needs to be sooner than later. You can't wait another year. It started with COVID. You stop the, you know, the promenade. And now you have people from outside ruining it because I won't go there with my wife and all these 400 kids. I bring my other kids there. It's insane to go there. It's hurting the community. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you. Any other quick resonant comments? Okay.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Amy Carroll, 124 Garden Street. Okay, so I got a letter about my sidewalk that needs to be replaced. My estimate is about $4,000 that they estimated for the damage. I had the James, the engineer come out and also the arborist Joe. They both met me at my house, which was very nice and took the time to come out, which I appreciated. They both acknowledged which my concerns and agreed with what my concerns are, which is the only part of the sidewalk that needs to be replaced is where the sycamore tree is. The sycamore tree I have in front of my house is enormous. It may be pretty, but it is enormous and it is too big for the location that it's in right now. I did some research on sycamore trees. Their average lifespan is about 500 years. And it's got years worth, so it means it's not even half grown. So at one point, the tree does need to come down because if it's going to last 500 years and it's not fitting in the spot right now, I would prefer it to come down now. My husband and I both work for insurance companies. Unfortunately, we know firsthand what tragedy those trees coming down can be. They can devastate an entire house. And as we all know, we've all seen the news, is that obviously they can create death too. My two kids, I have three kids, two of them are in the front windows of, that's where their bedrooms are. If that tree goes down, they are going to be the ones impacted. I have been nervous about the tree since we moved in. When there's a storm or anything of the such, I have the kids sleep or be in the rooms that wouldn't be in the front, which is not easy to always be cautious of that when you're worried about a storm is where are your children in the house? So I don't want to worry about that, but my concern is now is that I've always wanted the tree to come down. I've called about having it trimmed. The tree is immense, so large that the branches come down. If you read more about a sycamore tree, in fact, there's some debate on people online saying, should you put this tree in front of your house? And everybody says the tree is beautiful, but it's not meant to be in front of a house because the branches are not very sturdy at all. And so what happens is from weight of snow or wind, they come down. So I have two pictures. These are not even taken from in the last two weeks. These are probably taken three weeks ago. My normal debris on my front lawn is these branches falling off and coming down on my front lawn. So the tree is like falling apart as enormous as it is. This one, you could see there is a large tree that's broken off and sitting in the branches. So who wants to go walk onto there? Bruce, do you? Because I see you yawning and I'm kind of catching, I don't know. If you'd want to be onto this tree, if it's boring you, but anyway, I am concerned about it. I had an attorney involved. The attorney has sent a letter. I had the arborist come out. He said it's unsafe. I had the engineer come out. He agrees that it's unsafe. He has told me to speak to the trustees. All the trustees here have gotten an email from me. I did have Vinnie out to my house. But then it just is like shut down, like we want a nice neighborhood. But that's not very fair. Actually, my tree, my house is beautiful. It is extremely well groomed. I get that you guys want a nice house. I have one of the nicer houses. So I'm more concerned about the safety at this point. I have been instructed that if those roots are cut into, I'm putting that tree at more jeopardy of it coming down. So now I'm even putting my kids at more risk. Who wants to go to bed at night wondering if that tree is going to fall on top of my house with my children in it? I don't think it's fair. I also, I made a comment in the email about it, a yacht. A yacht that's 300 feet is beautiful, but do you want it in your front lawn? No, the tree is too big for the spot. And at this point, we're waiting to hear back. I'm kind of at a loss. I have felt that they keep passing the buck, but no answers to someone helping us with the tree. The arborist is very clear, that's your expert that you guys hired, that the tree should come down.
All right. So thank you for coming and sharing your quick comment. We actually have a meeting coming up to discuss our tree policy and putting that, you know, tree policy clearly in in writing as far as the arborist will discuss what you're saying with him.
Before I step away, I did want to mention that in your own coding that you guys have, 188.9, it talks about the legislative findings. On here, it actually talks about not tampering with the roots. So that's in 188.10. And destruction and removal, there's information on there about not tampering with the roots because you're putting the tree in more structural jeopardy.
All right. Thanks for coming.
This is Adam, my husband. He'll be fast.
So real quick, just want to make sure it's on the record. I want you guys to just be on notice, right? That we gave you the notice as a municipality, that we're very concerned about the liability. And if that tree falls down in our house on the next hurricane, which it may, you guys are well aware of it. We do not want the tree there. We think it's unsafe. If you cut the roots, if you don't cut the roots, right, Vinnie? Then you can't do anything with the sidewalk. That's up to you guys. I'm an insurance, she's an insurance. You make your own choice. I might check with your village attorney, which I think I told you, Vinnie, that would be a good idea. But you're on notice.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Any other quick comments in the room?
Emphasis on quick, please.
Yes, I'm Diane Kendrick, and I just wanted to know whose attention I should bring it to. There are three flags of sidewalk that run adjacent to the Garden City Hotel between Stewart Avenue and Seventh Street that are raised and causing a problem. Two weeks ago, one of the women was walking along that sidewalk and fell, smashed her face and her shoulder and needed medical attention. People traverse that particular sidewalk every day to go to the train. And it's in bad shape and I just want to know whose attention it should be brought to and who is responsible for replacing those three flags of sidewalk.
So I'm not sure which three flags, but you can put it in writing and send it.
See it. You can see it if you just walk down the street. They're raised that high above the rest of them.
Can you tell us that location again, please?
It's between Stewart Avenue and Seventh Street on Cathedral.
So it's the Garden City Hotel.
It abuts the Garden City Hotel.
It would be the hotels.
Well, who notifies them as to replacing it?
We will have.
We will, yeah.
DPW will look into it, ma'am.
I would appreciate that because a lot of the people that live in the Wyndham traverse that that stretch of sidewalk every single day. And this, I saw this lady fall and she fell right on her face and she bruised her shoulder very badly.
I'll swing by there tomorrow and I'll talk to John and we'll get on it like as of tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good.
Anyone else with a quick resonant comment? All right. So we'll move on to comments by department heads, beginning with Mr. Barone.
I'm sorry, Ms. Mayor. May I just have the floor for a moment, please? Before we go to the comments. No, I understand that. I understand that. This will just take a moment. If you don't want me to, I will wait, but I'm just asking you to just give me the floor.
A quick trustee comment.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And I only interrupted this time because I think it's a very important issue. I was away on vacation. I missed our last meeting. And when I came back, I didn't do as good a job as I normally do on my Garden City News. And I decided when I was elected that I was not going to respond to things in the paper that were directed at me, directed at the board. That's part of life. On August 2nd, so Friday that we got back two days later, I was made aware of an article in the paper in the Cordis Corner. And this one, and the reason I mentioned it, folks, is because it hit me. It hit me right between the eyes. And the sum and substance of the article. And John Cordis is a very well-known Garden City resident. I believe he grew up here, went to the high school, went to Adelphi, has been a tremendous asset to the village in terms of how he has covered and publicized the history of this terrific village. But the conclusion in the article is that as a result of where we are with St. Paul's, and we all realize that it's been 31, 32 years that this has become an issue, that it has somehow shaded this village as a dysfunctional place. And he compares us disfavorably to some neighboring towns. And I don't, I don't think we're better or worse than any other town. I just know what we have here. And it struck me that it just made sense for me to remind everyone, not that you need to be reminded how special a place this is. And it isn't one building that is going to rise us up. That building is iconic. It is historic. It is spectacular and we hope it will be with your help, with your money and your support in the next couple of years to come. And it's going to take time, but we're grinding through. The mayor is leading us. We have a very active board here. But that does not define this village. What defines this village is you people. It's the folks who come here. It's the folks who are on Seventh Street. It's the folks who are on the fields. We've got one of the best police forces on Long Island headed by a commissioner who is as well-regarded as anyone in the state. We have a spectacular volunteer fire crew of 110, 120. We have spectacular parks. We have Seventh Street, which is being revitalized. It's being cleaned up. We have new businesses there. We can go on and on, folks. This just, you know, there's times in your life where you got to stand up and say, come on, John. John has been a big proponent of this village forever. But when you talk about dysfunction and the dysfunction is caused by an inability and there are reasons for that, and I've got some significant opinions on why we are where we are on St. Paul's, but it's not important to do now and to get into. But this board and the previous board that was on, I call them administrations, has worked exceedingly hard. So this building will not define us. It'll be a spectacular success story when it happens. But it's you folks out here. It's the diversity in our population today that makes us special and will continue to. And that's not even talking about our religious institutions, our rec department. Everything that makes us what we are today. So I'm sorry, folks. It just got me right between the eyes and I wanted you to know that I know how hard we are working for you and how special a place that we will remain. Thank you. Well said, Ed.
All right. So we'll go to comments by department heads, beginning with Mr. Barone.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees. DPW will be covering eight items on the agenda this evening. I'd like to direct your attention to, on the human resources, item number three is a request to change the title of Assistant Superintendent of Public Works in the adopted budget to Deputy Superintendent of Public Works. There is no additional funding required to make this change and to promote the current Highway General Supervisor. Under Public Works, item number 13 is a request to ratify a change order submitted by Lizardos Engineering for additional engineering services at a total cost of $15,000. During design, it was determined that the current electrical service needed to be redesigned as it did not meet the demands for the renovated building design. Furthermore, the existing emergency backup generator was not sufficient for the renovated design and needed to be redesigned for the upgrade. Item number 14 is a request to approve change order one submitted for Merrick Utility for a total cost of $6,368.80 for additional work required to complete the water main installation on Clayton Road and Stewart Avenue. The additional work included relocating the jacking pit under the Long Island Railroad and restoration of the brick parking lot. Item number 15 is a request to accept the revised maintenance bond in the amount of $837,551. 17, 500, I'm sorry. $837,551.17 for the Village Hall HVAC project. Item number 16 is a request to add a Snap-on air conditioning machine to the 24/25 capital list. Approve Snap-on as a sole source distributor for the Polartec dual AC machine and to purchase the dual AC machine at a total cost of $16,795. This machine is used to service the air conditioning in all of our fleet vehicles, including police department vehicles. The newer vehicles come with a new type of freon that our existing service machine cannot accommodate. Without this machine, we'll be forced to send our vehicles out for service. To date, we have a savings of approximately $50,000 after ordering most of our equipment for this fiscal year. So we're tapping into that savings to purchase this machine. Items numbers 17 and 18 under a ward of bid is a request to reject all bids for the garage door maintenance contract and for streetlight poles, luminaires and accessories and rebid both of those contracts. And finally, item number 19 is a request to award the bid for fire hydrants and repair kits to Ferguson. This bid is used to purchase fire hydrants and repair kits that are ordered on an as-needed basis based upon unit cost. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Mr. Barone, just a quick question on number 19, the fire hydrants and repair kits.
Sure.
Is the necessity to to sign on with Ferguson a result of an expiration of a prior contract? What exactly led to this, John?
Correct. So our previous contract expired. We bid out a new contract. The base bid was $73,000. However, we don't order that much material. We just order it on an as-needed basis. So we approximated, you know, certain quantities for the bid that we may use this year, but it doesn't mean we have to.
Did the, just one final follow-up. Did the the current provider bid?
That's a question Mr. Carey might have to answer. Yeah.
That's fine. That's fine. Thank you very much.
John, I have one quick one for you. Number 15, HVAC renovation. Can you just give us the usual one-minute analogy on that project?
Sure. Number 15 is a completed project. It's for the HVAC system right here in Village Hall. We did get a rebate from PSEG for the installation. The short answer is this is just to re-accept the maintenance bond because we didn't calculate into it two change orders that were part of that project.
Got you. And that job is 100% done?
Correct.
Okay, great. Yeah, I thought so. I just wanted to get a confirmation. Thank you.
You got it.
If I may take this opportunity, Mr. Barone, to say thank you very much for you and your staff in making sure that the library is open. The doors are in place, pretty much on the date that you said it would be done. So thank you very much. I was there early in the morning and late at night and your staff was there before me and after I left. So thank you very much.
You're most welcome. That was a very important project for us.
One more question, John, and number 13. So that authorization, if I'm saying this correctly, to ratify means that that was already spent and we are asking to approve the money after it was spent. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So why would that happen? I mean, typically we are asked to approve or not approve spending before it happens.
So I'll have to defer to Mr. Giveno on that. It is a DPW project technically, but he's been spearheading it.
Thank you.
So the design, during the design process with the original RFP, that wasn't that wasn't allocated as far as the electrical upgrade and the generator upgrade. So with that design and pushing the project forward, they were asked to design the project accordingly with the new design. So that forced us to do a new upgrade generator that can satisfy the new build and the upgraded service to accommodate the new build.
No, I totally understand the request and why it was needed. I guess mine is a timing question about why this is why, and I just am trying to learn, I guess, why this request for us to approve an expenditure for work that was already done.
I understand and respect the question and the concern, but the intent was to move the project along and that just felt the cracks and to move the project along, this is what happened. So in order to continue that process, they were told to continue. And then we received this change order in the 11th hour.
This particular project has been asked about for close to a year, every meeting. Every every meeting, Mr. Janelle is asked about when the design is ready, when the design is ready, so. So and and some of this board, you weren't here for all those questions, but you've been here for a lot of them. And it's it was a judgment call to get this thing done. This is a requirement. You can't go forward with the design spec without this change. So it's a it's a coin toss. If you want us not to ratify anything, if that's the board's position in going forward, then we would have to wait another meeting to perpetuate the design. That's all.
I think that what in trustee Courtney and I have spoken about this, we don't would like to be contacted before any expenditures like this unless there's some emergency situation. But I don't think this came to anyone, including trustee Chester. Am I right?
You're right.
So we're all reachable. So.
When you say it's a judgment call, whose judgment made the call?
Mr. Janelle, but the what I'm saying is that the the there's been a lot of
I understand the process. I've been down that road. But part of the the issue is the plans that I see that we have may not be in a position that we will be able to build.
Without the upgrade. That's correct.
That's true, but the the specifications that go out have to be buildable. So you get a proper price. The decision to build or not to build comes after the spec is put out. So but you can't put out, you can't put out a incorrect specification. So when we that the goal has been, I understand the mayor's point, the goal has been to get the design done. So we put it out to bid. So in the we're in the eleventh hour and we've been, we've lost almost a year with the prior vendor who would want the three hundred sixty thousand dollars to design this thing. So which was, it was just, like I said, a judgment call. We're trying to expedite things so he can bring it to conclusion, but but an email would have been nice.
Let me let me jump in here for a second, guys, my background in construction. So in essence, basically, what happened here was this engineering and architecture firm got to a point where there were certain things that needed to be included in the final specs. Okay, and be re-engineered basically to make sure that the the final set of plans to go out to bid are complete. You know what I mean? Without having to, again, coming back to the board. I get it. You know what I mean? You you want to get a heads up on on some of this stuff. But there does come a time where we do have to trust the the people that run our village and, in my opinion, do a great job and allow them, you know, something like this to, hey, you know what? We have to do this. Not like we have an option. It's not like, oh, my goodness, we can do it or we can't do it. In order to complete the set of plans, this had to be done. So to me, I I'm personally comfortable allowing our executives on a small item like this, go ahead and make their own judgment call, not micromanage them to some degree and let them go ahead and complete the process so we can get the project out to bid. So that's just maybe.
We don't ratify as a matter of habit. Usually, it's related to water main breaks, sewer breaks, things that you really don't have a choice on to repair. But like I said, this was a long sought after bid specification. So it was judgment call, but it's just as easy to communicate in advance.
I think point made and communication will be better.
Absolutely.
Anything else? All right. Thank you, Mr. Barone, Ms. Wu.
Good evening, everyone. I have one item on the agenda tonight. Item number one. Board authorization is requested to approve the attendance of our deputy village treasurer and village auditor to attend the NICOM annual fall training school. This is an annual conference that is hosted by the New York Conference of Mayors and the New York State Office Controller's Office. It will be held in Saratoga Springs, and we're estimating a cost of not to exceed thirty-five hundred dollars. Funds are available in our training and travel budget.
Treasurer Wu, can you give us an update on the community benefit fund with the railroad?
Oh, yeah, sure. So recently, Mr. Swazie and I had a phone call with their representative regarding the latest accounting from their side on the community benefit fund. And they provided that schedule to us. They agreed that they will reimburse us for the last request that I sent them in the amount of two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. And this was for work that was done on Maryland Avenue, the landscaping work. We still have some retainage on the vendors that did work on Maryland Avenue for the paving and the landscaping work that totaled approximately fifty-six thousand dollars. We have not paid that to the vendors yet until they provide a maintenance bond. Once we pay that, the railroad stated they will reimburse us for that additional fifty-six thousand dollars. In addition to that, they did mention that they will be deducting from the community benefit fund the supplemental landscaping as well as work that was done on Denton Avenue Bridge. But then in addition to that, they will, they've agreed to authorize the application that we sent at your request for the Nassau Haven Parks work that was done there in the amount of about two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. So they've agreed to reimburse us for that as well.
When do you think we get the two hundred and eighty-one thousand?
You know, we had a call with him last week, I believe. So they're in the process of, you know, they have their staffing has been, you know, dwindled down for this project. But they said they would be submitting that reimbursement soon. I will be following up with them shortly if I don't hear back.
And what amount are they talking about with the supplemental landscaping?
I believe that was two hundred and twelve thousand dollars.
No, I think it's
Two twelve?
I think we got it a lot.
It was two twelve, two forty-five.
I think we got it a lot further down than that. Okay, we'll talk about that. Review that.
Did the baffles come up in the conversation?
No, there is actually no funding left after those two reimbursements are made.
Yeah, I think we definitely got a lower number than the two twelve in our negotiations, but I remember Ralph. So anyway, we'll take a look at that.
Sure.
Excuse me.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Givenelli.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees. The Building Department does have one item on the agenda tonight. If I can bring your attention to number twelve. This is for the Municity Five implementation of software. Approval of funds, board authorization is requested for the approval of funds for the Building Department and Department of Public Works. This is a joint venture in this implementation for Municity Five software. The invoice from I C C Community Development Services dated June fourteenth, twenty twenty-four for a total cost of sixty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty. A portion of this will be paid through the Building Department and Department of Public Works for the total cost per department of thirty-two thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. This will be coming out of the operating budget. This software is it's an upgrade of the existing software that we currently have in the Building Department. It's operating permit software to keep track of all the permits coming into the department and processing. That's all the items I have on the agenda. I do want to just go over the work performance for the month of July. We've got a pretty good reading for the month of July with with the building inspections performed by the department, where three hundred and fifty-one inspections performed, permits issued, one hundred and sixty-three, total fees collected for the month of July were three hundred and fifty-seven thousand. Total complaints and addressed were twenty-two. We've had a very busy month of July and hope to have very busy hogs as well. That's all I have on the agenda this evening. I'll be one happy to answer questions the board may have.
Wanted to thank you for giving us the tour of the firehouse and reviewing everything. I think the frustration is on my part, I'm sure on the others. Excuse me. Is that, you know, it's been a year ago that I we sat here and and had a beating with Lizardos. And here we are, you know, over a year later. I'm just, you know, and I'm not an architect and engineer. I'm kind of puzzled by the 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 length of time of the process. It's it's frustrating. And I just wonder if they were dealing with a commercial account business as opposed to a municipality, would it would it be different? I don't know. You you would know better, but I just wanted to
As you
Hear my frustration.
As you're aware of all the dates I sent you, we've had over a dozen meetings with them. I've been fast-tracking the project since day one because of the loss of the year through B B S Architects and Engineers. So there was a lot of downtime with that that firm. They probably overextended themselves and took a lot of work on and couldn't handle the project. And then we went to the second lowest bidder, which was Lizardos Engineers, and they've been great to work with. And I've been pretty much spearheading the whole project, and I've been on top of them. I mean, I've been on top of them with meetings, with calls, with everything else. And that's why I just took initiative and say, you know what? If it's got to, you got to have plans to design for a certain building. If the upgrade is needed, let's do it.
Right.
And that's where I ended up saying, okay. I mean, being an architect, I know the first process and the procedures of what's needed. So, you know, hopefully the board can respect that and and move forward. But with this project and dealing with it for since I've been here, we can't just keep kicking the can down the road. We got to come up with some kind of solution. Something has to be done. The building's unoccupied. If it's going to be a garage, let it be a garage. If it's going to be a design, let's come up with the budget. Let's try to design for that budget. It's kind of hard with putting all the amenities and trying to get an updated building because the cost just doesn't go down. The cost increases year per year. I can say that if we did this project in two thousand and eighteen, it would have been half the cost like we thought about. But some something, you know, we have to pull, make a decision and move forward. We can't keep looking back.
No, I would agree with that, and it's not a criticism of you. I'm just thinking of the of the company. It just seems
And 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 all due respect, the more we wait, the more design fees are kind of could be incurred, more design fees. So my suggestion is ask for the email to the board was let's run to the finish line. Let's get a cost and let's see where we are.
Right. I'm not saying we we waiting. I'm just saying and and on their end and how long it's taking.
It it is the process. As a design company, consulting company, do they over extend their staff and extend their projects? Yes. They always go for to stretch the limits. And then, you know, usually municipalities are always on the back end. But, you know, I've been pushing. If not, it probably would have took longer.
Thank you.
Giuseppe, I got a quick one for you on that. Approximately, when did they actually, when do we give them the okay to start work and when do they start work on this project?
Our our original site meeting was December twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three.
Okay.
That was the initial site meeting.
So they've been working, give or take on this project.
They've been working on design since about, I would say, give or take February, March.
Okay, so they mean, did they
For a job this size, we're on point.
Yeah, my opinion on it from, again, dealing with architects and 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 construction, pretty much my whole life. Bruce, it's actually not that long of a period of time for that kind of, I see all those plans. They're very, very detailed.
It's extensive.
We're gonna have to work on 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 the budget, of course, and see how that works out. But in all fairness, those plans, how detailed they were that I saw, six to eight months is actually pretty fair in regards to the length of time to get those kind of detailed plans. So, you know, that's just my opinion on it just from
Yeah, no, and and I certainly respect that. I just, I I think we started with the meeting in July and then I guess it took a while.
There was a few beings before that.
Got, okay, okay. Can I make a suggestion?
Absolutely.
I would greatly appreciate the opportunity to look at the plans in detail at a meeting instead of on the back of a pickup truck when I'm in the building. So to the extent that you can extend to the board either copies of the plans, I don't want to kill your machines or anything. But how can we educate ourselves in advance of what the plans look like in order that our questions hopefully are more cogent than the ones that we get to ask if we only have a brief opportunity to review? Thank you.
I agree. We've just received those plans, I believe, as of Friday. There was a hot off the press, but I'll do so to
Literally.
Yeah. Yeah, it was coming off the
I got one last one for you, Giuseppe. Based on where we're at right now, how soon can we put this thing out to bid and when can we expect to get realistic bids back so we can begin to figure out whether this thing fits in a in a budget or not?
So like I said, I'm putting a lot of pressure on the design professionals. They probably hate me by now. But as far as the design, final plans, specifications, we should have by the end of August. It's got to go reviewed in-house, then counsel, and we're looking to put this thing out possibly if everything works out mid-September. And and I request that we please put this out for six weeks because of the extent of the project. Any normal bid is probably three to four weeks. But this being so extensive with structural and everything else to get the, you know, to get the range of a good number, I think we should put it out for six weeks, if not more.
Yeah, I agree. It's a very detailed plan, and we definitely want to make sure we get these bids right so we can make some good decisions.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Givenelli.
You're welcome.
Mr. Blake.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Recreation has several items on the agenda this evening. The first one being number eight, which I am going to respectfully ask somebody to remove from the agenda as I had a phone call earlier today from Cassie Reynolds, our purchasing agent. She has tracked down another contract for a truck that is cheaper than this one. So we can save some money if we put this off a little bit. So I'll put that in your ear if somebody would please remove that in a few minutes.
Just remove it now. We'll remove number eight from the agenda.
Thank you. Moving along. Number nine, we would like to purchase some attachments for our Ventrac multipurpose machines. This is an aerator, a cedar, and a ball-filled groomer attachment for use with our Ventrac forty-five hundred machines. These come at a cost for all three items of twenty-three thousand, sixty-three dollars and sixty-four cents. Pricing for this item is from a Source Bell contract, which means it's been pre-bidded. And these items are identified in our capital budget and adequate funds are available in that account. Number ten, I'm asking for an amendment to the Adelphi University License Agreement. When we came to you for payment back in May, I believe, we had not gotten the final bill from Adelphi. We had used an extra eight hours of rehearsal time for the dance ensemble, and they are looking for payment. So I need to ask you to authorize it. It's about a seven hundred and twenty dollar difference. And finally, number eleven, purchase of another Ventrac attachment, but this is not coming out of capital. This was identified in our operating budget. This is a lawnmower attachment to be used with the Ventrac forty-five hundred, and it's used on larger facilities such as St. Paul's and Community Park. Pricing for this item again is off a Source Bell contract. Funds are available in the recreation equipment account in the operating budget. That's what we have on the agenda tonight, but I do have one happy bit of news. Last Friday at about two o'clock, I took delivery of a brand-new Bluebird bus, which we had gone out to bid on a contract which was funded by Senator Thomas's office, and the bus was received on Friday. It looks terrific. It's very modern, should be a good riding vehicle, and for everybody's comfort, it's air-conditioned. So we will be putting that bus into service in the next several days, and we have a trip scheduled, I believe, on the twenty-fourth going out to the Argyle Theater for our senior citizens. So we're going to get a lot of use out of that bus, and hopefully it lasts even half as long as the old one, which gave us thirty-eight years of good service, a lot of which is due to the amazing work by Mr. Barone's mechanics down at the shop. We would probably still be using the bus, except they just don't make parts for it anymore. It still runs well. It's still serviceable, but it's time. That's all I have this evening. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. That is great news on the bus, and I'm glad in time for the senior trips. One question
Okay, go ahead.
You, as we're purchasing these, how was it working out with the hedges and the sidewalks? I know that's something got a lot of complaints. We went out to residents and let them know and ask them, please report because people may have no idea that their hedge is growing over the sidewalk and obstructing pedestrians. So how's that working out?
I think in the last three weeks, we probably sent out close to eighteen letters. Thanks to, in part to Giuseppe's Code Enforcement Officer Anthony, who works very closely with us, it's a really good relationship. And we do go back and we check on them, and we are getting compliance from most of the folks. I don't think we've had to go cut a private property since earlier in the spring. And a couple of the troublesome ones that we've heard from numerous times have been taken care of. So people are responding to the notes on the paper and on social media, and I guess they're responding to the letters, and we're staying on top of it.
Great. So we haven't used, I recall, a purchase. Didn't we buy a specific attachment just for
We did. We bought a an articulating hedge trimming arm that fits on the Ventrac. It's been used, if you've had any occasion to go down South Avenue the last couple of Saturdays, it's being used down there to cut the hedges all the way from Rockaway up to Nassau Boulevard, and it works really well. It's especially good on the taller hedges. Most of the lower ones on the residence homes, we're able to get with hand cutters because they're usually not that tall. But in the case where we've had a couple of really tall ones, we have used that machine. It works out very well. These these little Ventrac machines have been real good workhorses. They do everything from move snow to cut grass to trim hedges. They're just wonderful little machines, and they're very reliable. So we're trying to migrate as many things over to one standard unit as we can, just for the ease of maintenance and equipment and supplies so that we don't have to stock parts for a Toro, a John Deere, a Hustler. If it's all Ventrac, we can store the supplies and the parts that we need and make it a little more efficient for for John's crew.
Great. Thank you. And the one other thing I wanted to add was the Recreation Assessment Survey, which we have extended. That's scheduled to close on Sunday, end of the day Sunday. So for anyone here, if you got that five-page rec assessment in the mail and you didn't fill it out yet, fill it out right away and mail it back in. We have received or the survey company received over four hundred, which is the number they needed for statistic validity, but we want to hear from as many residents as we can. So we're trying to push that message out if the, I know the library the, I know the library has a nice screen, um, not the li- the pool. If we can maybe get that tomorrow and Saturday and Sunday, well displayed. Um, survey is closing Sunday. There's still time. And for anyone who thinks they may have gotten it, but they put it in a pile and they can't find it, that's okay. I included in, I think the mayor's column has the link. You can go online, fill out the five-page survey. One of the questions is your address. And once you put your address in, the survey company will identify that as part of the random sample. So please, um, we want to hear from everybody.
Thank you.
Just seeing this, uh, Adelphi, this, you know, minor, uh, increase in the amount for the dance. Do we, and maybe this is for Ralph or Irene, um, we used to charge them a fee every year or something like that. Have, have we been doing that? Would bring, you know, because the fire department makes so many calls there. It's just kind of frustrating, you know, when, when I see something like this.
The, uh, pre-COVID, they would give us twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, a year. Um, and the explanation from them is that it was for the use of the pool parking lot. Um, and then when COVID came, they stopped giving it to us. Um, versus an outright contribution. And, uh, I think post-COVID, I'm not sure. Are they using the parking field?
We have it. I think, um, Mr. Fishberg wrote up an agreement that includes it now. But we should have received that money. I think it's.
They, they did not use the parking lot at the start of last school year, but, um, they did use it certainly the last half. There were twenty, twenty-two buses in there.
We'll follow up with them. We have received it.
So when did we last receive a, do you recall? I'm sorry, this wasn't on the agenda, but that was if. Yeah, I recall that there was a discussion about that agreement and I believe you put it in there. So it wasn't always.
But I also believe that there was a group of trustees that went to visit Adelphi earlier this year and you were coming up with some type of an agreement on that.
We did, yeah. I didn't know.
It may be more. This was a minimal.
It was twenty-five thousand a year. They came to the Estates P O A meeting. Um, the gentleman who was the head of it, the whole team from Adelphi came. And they talked about that they basically would give us twenty-five thousand dollars a year and that they had been giving us twenty-five thousand a year and that they would continue to give us twenty-five thousand dollars a year. And it was up to us to follow up on it. And that's when we had a group of you that went to meet them earlier this year that was supposed to close it up.
Actually, if we can get a report from Gary on that agreement, the twenty-five, I think, would all agree is a little light. Um, but it was, is, I think they have to give us at least the twenty-five thousand is my recollection. Um, I'm, I'd hope that we'd be able to get some more and that could be the subject of some further discussion.
Yeah, we did have the meeting, uh, the mayor, myself, trustee Torino, I, excuse me, Ralph, I forget who else.
I wasn't in a meeting on that, I don't think. I was on a meeting with something else at Adelphi, but we'll get an update from council.
Schools do do that. Um, we had, uh, you know, a study that was done by, um, I think, uh, Boston College shows like up in Boston, how a lot of the colleges all basically give money to the municipality, the city of Boston. And, uh, twenty-five thousand is light. It should probably really be upwards of like seventy-five thousand or something.
Yeah, I, I, I would agree with that a hundred percent. It's great to have Adelphi. It's an amazing university in town. Uh, and any of us who have sent kids to college or still sending kids to college knows how cheap colleges in today's day and age and the tuition prices that they're charging, which is out of control in my view. Um, I think, uh, you know, it'd be good for us to sit down and really reevaluate this and, and make sure that Adelphi is the old saying goes, paying their fair share because they get to enjoy this magnificent town, the attraction of this town, the fire department, parking lots, you name it. And twenty-five thousand? That, that doesn't sit well with me to be honest, which I think we need to reevaluate that and, and work together, you know what I mean? Work together as a team. But I think, uh, we need to assess that, in my opinion. Thank you.
And just all two things. Um, one is on the pool, which is seems to be doing very well. And I know that you had made some changes to the staffing model, especially for the kiddie pool. Um, which I will say noticeably has improved kind of just the overall quality of how that part of the pool operates. The calmness is much better than it had been, et cetera. So tell that staff, thanks, because I'm sure they don't vie for the kiddie pool.
It's not, not anybody's favorite spot, no.
Yes, but they do a great job with it. So, and it really has made a big difference. So we appreciate that. Uh, my second is just a follow-up question, since there was a lot of, um, back and forth, shall we say, in the beginning where we hired the new landscaping firm for the village. And, you know, I'm going with the no news is good news, but I just thought you could give us an update on how that's working.
Uh, Brightview has been doing a terrific job. Their work has been exceptional. Uh, they come in and they are quick, they are clean, uh, they are careful. They do not run the machines at full speed up and down the medians. They take their time. More importantly, they are sticking to the biggest part of the contract, which is pick up the trash before you cut the grass and pick up the sticks before you cut the grass. And they're doing that very well. They've all also been very responsive when we've had small issues. They missed a little spot. We call them, they're Johnny on the spot. They have two large, uh, yards here on Long Island, one in, uh, Oceanside and one further out on Stewart Avenue, I think back behind Hampton Appliance. So they can respond pretty quickly. Um, the work has been very well done and the communication has been terrific. Uh, they work real well with both, uh, Tom Gordon and, uh, Steve Barnage of our Parks Department, and, uh, we've been very happy with them.
Thank you.
Paul, I got a couple of queens, quick ones for you here. Um, and, and Ralph, this might go to you, actually. Uh, Governor Hockel had the state of an emergency on the storm. I saw an email on that. Uh, are they going to help us, um, or reimburse us for some of the time and effort we're still cleaning up for the storm? Because I saw two trees down in two parks this morning early as I was trying to run slowly. Um, and I informed some of the right people about that. Um, so I was just curious. Is, are we going to be able to get any reimbursements from good old Governor Hockel for this?
So when the emergency was declared, um, my commission actually notified me when it happened. I was on the phone commissioning and, uh, I immediately sent that email to, uh, the department heads who would be involved in such activities, asked them to record all, uh, mileage on vehicles, um, any overtime used. That, that information would come from the department heads sent to finance and they would interact with the, uh, with the state.
Great, yeah. Because again, if we can get a few dollars from that, that would be fantastic. And Paul, on another item, St. Paul's, uh, the fields at St. Paul's. I sent you an email this week. You responded, which was great. Can you give the, uh, public a quick update, especially I suppose the younger people are looking forward to using the fields and the reopening of the fields that have been closed and our general plan this fall? So people have a clear view as to, uh, the game plan.
Absolutely. Uh, the fields will be reopening for the fall season, I believe. Uh, youth, youth sports groups are looking to get on there the week after Labor Day. Uh, we will be opening up the closed area, which has been closed just about a year now. At that time, the grass in that area has come in very well. It is nice and green and lush. And, uh, we anticipate having good field conditions in that area. At the same time, we'll, we'll be closing off another approximately one-third of the field area uh, on the north side of the field. And that will be closed for about a year while we do the same work on that part of the field. Uh, the idea is to close a different section once a year so that no field will go more than two years without having, uh, good renovation done. The renovations include, uh, aeration, deep tining. Uh, we're using a pre-emergent crabgrass control now on the areas that are closed and it seems to be working very well. We are still using an organic blend on the fields, but we have added a new product to it, another one that is all natural, organic. It gives us a nice shot of nitrogen and it's comprised of kelp and mealworms. So there's nothing in there that anybody, uh, would have a problem with rolling around in, unless you don't like worms. Other than that, the next step will be, as you know, removal of the baseball field on the northeast corner of the property. That field, uh, gets very little use. It is basically just a practice field for the middle school teams. They've already been informed that the field is going away. By removing that field, it gives us a little more flexibility with being able to shift fields around from season to season. So we don't constantly burn them out. We will also in the fall be doing a little more in the way of sodding some of the goal areas on the fields that worked very well last year. The sod actually took and, and thrived and gave us a little better area in front of the goals, which is the most heavily used part of those fields. Uh, other than that, it's just constantly cutting them and treating them and overseeding them. Uh, we have a crew out there every Monday after the weekend. They go out there with a truck that's loaded with topsoil and seed and they just scour the entire facility looking for potholes and dings. And they fill them in, they seed them, and we hope to get good growth on it. Um, we have been getting some help from a couple of greenskeepers at the golf courses. You know, your friend from Cherry Valley came over. We also have the greenskeeper from the Garden City Golf Club came over and did some soil tests and some moisture tests and gave us the, uh, the okay that we're getting good moisture on the field. The irrigation system is doing what it should do and, uh, he was happy with the levels that he found when he tested the soil. So we're, we continue to try to make the fields better. We're getting good cooperation from all of the youth groups when we ask them to please. If you can get away with five fields instead of eight, it helps us a lot. And they've all been willing to work with us. And I do need to add that we had, um, one of our Recreation Commission members, uh, Ray Meyer and, uh, Andy Hill, Assistant Superintendent, had a meeting over at the school administration with the grounds crews over there. And the school district has committed to providing us with a full-size soccer field at the Stewart School Field this fall. So that will allow us to take even more heavy play off of the field over at St. Paul's. And again, gives us a little more flexibility. That's the short and sweet verse.
Paul, that's great. Appreciate that. And, uh, looking forward to the, uh, next recreational meeting in September and continue the discussion. We talked about, about hopefully in the near future, adding a new turf field, uh, at St. Paul's for both lacrosse and soccer. If that works out, uh, but at least we're, uh, we're trying to, uh, look at all the options for that because that will take huge wear and tear off the natural grass fields because the amount of use you can put on a, a synthetic turf field. And, uh, the new systems are obviously so much better than the older, uh, turf fields that were designed originally. So we'll continue to work on that this fall.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you for the work on the fields and to the, um, residents who are volunteering to help us out. That's very nice. And I, I have one question. What's the crabgrass situation now in the closed area?
It's started to pop a little bit, um, as it does every August. Uh, it's not as bad as in years past though, because of the pre-emergent. Uh, we're weighing the possibility of using some post-emergent. We did put that out there that we, that we might have to do that, but I don't think it's gotten to the point where we need to do that yet. Staff is monitoring it and if we need to do that, we'll do that.
When would the post-emergent go down?
Uh, sometime after August fifteenth. Uh, that's the earliest we'd want to put it down. And, uh, we don't want to put it down too close to opening the fields. I'm really trying to avoid using it. We, we really don't want to use it. But at some point, we have to balance, you know, are we going to be able to maintain a safe field? Or are we going to give up the safety for not treating it? Um, we always try to do the right thing for our kids. We've been organic now for five years. We have, we don't use any chemicals or pesticides, which gives us a little bit of a handicap, but, uh, thankfully we have good people giving us advice. Our organic partner, uh, is a, a great company. They know exactly what's going on, Alternative Earth Care. And as we noted, a couple of residents who work at the golf courses have been over giving us some, some really good advice. And I say it all the time, but we have a dedicated staff that is out there working hard to get those fields in good shape. So we're hoping that we're going to have good grass this year.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Blake. Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two items on the agenda. Number six, I'm requesting, uh, permission for myself and Inspector Nissel to go to Boston for the International Association Chiefs of Police. This is the, uh, it's a national and worldwide association that I belong to for years. Uh, this year, it's many topical, uh, topics will be, uh, covered. And one of the reasons why I really want to go to this is because we got that very good sized grant for tech. We're going to have a lot of vendors there and a lot of demonstrations. So it'll be an opportunity to see what's out there to, uh, help us, uh, do a better job policing. Uh, number, uh, number seven, weights and measures. I ask this twice a year. Uh, we need to have the scales calibrated. The only place it does is upstate. We need, uh, calibrated for what preparation and for what finding. So, uh, we ask for that to be done also. Uh, I'd just like to, uh, go over a couple of things. First, the, um, calls for the month of July, we had a busy month again. We had two thousand one hundred ninety-nine calls, seventy case investigations, twenty-seven arrests, hundred sixty-six medical calls, sixty-seven auto accidents, twenty-two impounds. We issued one thousand one hundred fifty-three traffic tickets, one thousand nine hundred twenty-eight parking tickets and thirteen appearance tickets. In addition, I'd like to talk about the fine work that some of our officers did for the last month. We had, um, three significant arrests. In my view, we had, we had twenty-two for the month, but we had, uh, three significant, we had two trespassing during the overnight hours that our officers were notified of and responded and arrested both subjects. And then we had a subject who, uh, went on a rampage, uh, but one of the calls he did was attempt to, um, break into a house on New High Park Road. You know, he stole a car on Queens, tried to break into the house, went to, um, uh, went into, uh, Walgreens on Franklin Avenue, stole some stuff and then went up to a fancy store up in Manhattan and stole the mat again. I don't know what he was going to do with that. And then, um, then he, uh, then he came back and one of my, uh, detectives who was actually going to get the film from Walgreens spotted a car and, uh, made the arrest. So that was an excellent job on, by that detective. And also, um, I'm, I don't want to take this under way from the fire department, but, um, the last month, uh, they've been amazing. They, uh, had a couple of real tough fires. They did a great job. And I, um, one of my ex-employees who's a fire chief now, Chief Moody, did a wonderful job the other day. Um, he was on his way to a call at the NYU building and he saw a smoke in the air, got out of his truck, found a fire in a garage and got the family to safety. I'm telling you, in my lifetime as a cop, we're here to protect lives. That gentleman did a great job and he protected lives and property. And we, they were able to contain the fire to the garage. Being a former firefighter, it's an excellent job and they deserve a lot of kudos, especially Chief Moody.
Thank you for all of the work, uh, the department did. And, um, Chief Moody, fantastic story. Any questions? Anyone else?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Jackson, yeah. Shocker, I got one. Um, the gentleman that spoke earlier, I'm sorry I didn't catch his name, but obviously he made some valid points, uh, and I think he speaks for a lot of residents in the village in regards to the concern of, uh, all these lovely young teenagers that somehow have decided that Garden City is a place they want to hang out every Friday. Come off trains all over Long Island and, uh, create some havoc in our town. And I know you guys have done what I think is an amazing job trying to deal with that every Friday. Um, it's a, it's a public street, uh, it's a public train. Um, there's no easy fix here. Uh, can you give us any, uh, ideas you have as best you can, uh, in regards to how to further look at this situation and, and hopefully try and curb it as we, uh, as we head down the end of summer into the beginning of fall. And, and thanks for, listen, you guys have done an amazing job. It's a very difficult job when you have that many young people who a lot of the times might be obnoxious, disrespectful, especially in today's day and age. Um, and it's not an easy job and we really appreciate all the officers and, and, and you for, for doing the very best you can with it. And if you could just give us some ideas and hopefully put the, uh, put some of the minds at ease here as regards to what we can do moving forward. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Uh, what we're doing is, uh, we have a crew of officers assigned. We're also now bringing detectives in, uh, for undercover work to, to try to weed out some of this other stuff that's going on. We also have some traffic agents in place uh, for, uh, just to, to have the lights on the vehicles and, and provide safety and when we need it. Um, it's, it's challenging, uh, to be honest with you. Uh, I think the guys have done a great job. It's funny, the, the days we had them, uh, some type of skirmishes in the last couple of weeks were our, our two least attended ones, but it was because of the rain. I think sometimes when it's raining, everybody starts uh, being a little closer to each other and that's when tempers start flying. Um, so that's another challenge for us when we, and we had bad weather that day. Um, I don't know why anybody would be out that day, um, uh, when trees fall and everything else, but we were out there and, um, it's, you know, it's quite a, it's, 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 if you think about it, you have, uh, Parkfield Seven S, Seven Street, Parkfield Seven N. Uh, they go by C V S and into ninety and they also go down to, uh, by the hotel and, and the, um, the railroad station. So it is, uh, quite an area and quite a task. I think the guy's doing a great job. We're changing, when they're changing, um, we found a couple of places where they were hanging out. Um, and, uh, so we put a stop to that and, uh, we, we we're seeing what we gotta do now. Uh, Detective Hennessy, as you heard, is doing the investigation. This one skirmish that, uh, got, uh, we find out later. Um, he's doing a good job investigating and, uh, we'll hope to come to fruition when an arrest. Uh, we made a couple. Uh, we made a couple, um, apprehensions already and we're hoping that also, uh, deters people from coming. And we're going to have detectives out again and try to get more. Like I said, it is a task. We have great guys and, uh, and gals and they're doing a good job and, um, we'll continue to do so.
Good man. Thanks so much. Um, is there anything as a board we can do? In regards to putting things in place to help you guys with this situation? I know it's, it's not an easy one to answer, but I'm just, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to, uh, figure out what we can do to try and again. Uh, not, not have this situation every Friday night when people are trying to have a nice peace and quiet dinner and enjoy a Friday evening, especially now here coming into the fall. You know, that's all.
That, if I can just interject here. Vinnie, it's probably a question better addressed to, um, Gary, uh, to, to counsel. Because it would probably necessitate, uh, consideration of some kind of ordinance law code addition, I think. I mean, if you, if you share, I can see you feel like you're on the spot here a little bit, Commissioner, but i- am I right in, in, in that regard?
Well, there's, there's so many different ways to, uh, address an item. My issue is I have to deal with people's rights.
Yep.
And, um, so you have to balance the people's rights versus, um, law violations and how, how the law violations have been defined by the courts. So it's a very, uh, you might see something that's written down in a law, but at the courts I'm not, I've struck, either struck it down or they don't go with that the way it's written. So it, it's difficult, uh, on our offices, so we have to stay on top of that. And we have to be mindful of that. I've, I've been speaking, I've spoken to many of you, including the mayor and Mr. Fishburg. And we have discussed how items that possibly could be brought up, but, um, again, we have to be mindful of certain of those facts and, uh,
No, we understand that and we appreciate it.
Again, uh, we're trying to, um, you know, we just, as you go along, it's like everything else, like as, like a sports coach, you're just, as things change. Uh, last week was tough with, because of the weather. The weather was really tough. I don't know. I guess young kids don't mind 50 mile an hour winds and pouring rain. And, uh, we couldn't even see in front of us a couple of times. And yet they were having a good time and, and just hanging out and talking. So, uh, it's a different, it's a different, uh, the last two weeks was a little more, uh, you know, with the rain. And then, and, and again, it changes the whole dynamic of how you patrol. So we gotta adjust on the fly and do the best we can.
Yeah, no, we appreciate it. Thanks so much and we'll continue to work hard and find solutions.
I just want to reassure people with, I've had extensive discussions with Commissioner and with counsel and with other trustees. And we are brainstorming and I just was at a village, uh, meeting with other officials and have another idea to try. Um, we will keep working on trying to come up with some that will, something that will work is, um, we can't continue like this. I think we all know that. So thanks for all your advice.
This is not just a Garden City issue.
No.
So, uh, not only are we thinking, but I believe other departments in other cities and other states are looking to see what type alternatives they can put into place. And they are likewise confounded by that very challenging balance between public safety and the rights of the individual. So.
It's a conversation with counsel and we are doing that. So.
Amen. Yes.
All right. Yep.
That's right.
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. I'm sorry. Thank you, Chief Todd. Did we go to Chief Todd yet? Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. Chief Todd.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees. The Fire Department does not have anything on the formal agenda this evening. Uh, we do encourage all residents to continue to like and follow our Facebook page for continued fire safety tips. Uh, this month we're fo- focusing on kids going back to college, dorm room safety. So, uh, keep your eye out. Uh, for the month of July, the Fire Department responded to over 113 fire alarms. And as Commissioner Jackson mentioned, Chief Moody, uh, came upon a garage fire the other day. Uh, he was able to notify the homeowners to get them to safety. And we're happy to report that we're able to contain it to just the garage. So kudos to Chief Moody.
Excellent.
Thanks for all the work. Those tips are terrific for the college kids. Well done.
With regard to those 113 alarms, how many of them, if you can either estimate or know, were because of, uh, responding to Adelfi?
Uh, the exact month last month, I cannot recall off the top of my head, but on average, 10% of our fire calls are to Adelfi. Approximately 120 calls a year.
And the reason I ask that is because when I read the, uh, police blotter, which, uh, the Commissioner is kind enough to send me for my breakfast reading. He does, there is a notation as to if there is a false alarm, that how many times they are checked. And the reason why I raise that issue is the topical conversation, if we are looking to Adelfi or an increased remuneration, uh, if there's a way for us to parlay that into, uh, a larger contribution to the village. So I don't know how you could, but if you're saying that it's 10%, which is 120 units, you know, 120 calls. That's a nice, yep.
Never to deal with.
You're welcome.
I'm also assuming that none of them are workers.
No, we've had some minor burnt motors. That's about it.
Yeah.
The majority of these kids don't know how to cook.
No.
All right. Thank you.
And hairdryer, and hair dryers too, I think you've said. That's it.
Thanks for the, um, the tour the other day over at Edgemere Firehouse. Uh, we're just trying to get these plans out to bid and, uh, and figure out a way to get a budget where we can get this firehouse done for once and for all.
Appreciate you stopping by.
And thanks for the meeting going over the budget as well.
Thank you, Chief. And I'm going now to Mr. Fishburg and I'll just lead him because these two items, um, that are on, for Village Council. Our continuation of an initiative we have begun on designating parkland, recognizing the importance of the parks in their community. What makes it so special here and preserving those for future generations. So, Mr. Fishburg?
Yes, those items four and five, there's one, um, one, one of these, all these park, all these park designations have fallen within a, the type two seeker review, which means that there was no seeker review, State Environmental Quality Review Act, uh, required. However, on community park, uh, the, the board is also being asked to adopt a negative declaration, which is part of the, uh, resolution that's declaring, um, community park, parkland. And that's because, um, it's over 25 acres. And being over 25 acres, it becomes a type one action that requires the negative declaration. So that's why the board is being asked to adopt a negative declaration on item number four.
Thank you for your work on these items. Right, Mr. Swazie.
Good evening, Mayor, Trustees, Garden City residents. Uh, Mayor, I have nothing on the agenda. I want to just go back to, uh, Trustees Trino's comments about the library doors. The executive director and I spoke today, she wants to, uh, um, they were well received. Uh, I did see one woman there yesterday who said, I just sold my house. I'm moving. Why'd you wait so long? But I, I apologized on behalf of the village. Um, but there are people walking in saying, these are great. So, uh, good job, John, you're the engineers. But the executive director also wants to extend a thank you to DBW and specifically the Street Department, who's headed by, uh, General, um, Irish Supervisor Bart DiCristanza. Uh, they moved the historical documents down to the cottages for us, the files and boxes. As assisted by, uh, our building maintainer Chris Brazil. Uh, they painted the walls, uh, moved the, you know, library, cleaned the area. They took the shelves off, they passed the walls, painted them. They helped move furniture and boxes for the new seating arrangements at the library. Uh, very appreciative. Also, um, on the backend of that, the, the items were moved to the cottages. Um, that facility, uh, the, the, the files were put back in place in the same configuration they were at the library. Uh, the, um, the documents were put back in there today. Mr. Belmer was down there today with me, uh, had keys made, Mayor. Six sets, one for Mr. Jupenello, one for our building maintainer. Myself and Kelly will have one and Mr. Belmer and Ms. Seiler will have a set. Uh, so that's basically it. I have no, oh, I'm, the library also, besides the doors, you know, the library is going through. The HVACs, still ongoing new HVAC system, new fire alarm and PA system. The mold remediation is completed. Uh, the roof is completed, the carpet you approved last week, that's going to start. The parking field will come next if the HVAC is done. Mr. Blake, uh, and landscaping. So, and the, the security planters are in place also. I just want to also point out that Mr. Blake had to leave. He has a broken pipe in one of his facilities, so he asked me if he could leave. So that's why he departed. Just, yeah. Any questions? Be happy to.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for all the work on that. I also want to thank Mr. Belmer in the room because it was considerable work that he had to do in getting all of those, um, documents in boxes and, um, transported. They've got a nice spot now in the cottages. Um, so thank you, Mr. Belmer, for all the work you do as our village historian.
Mayor, if I may, I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Belmer's help on some of these park designations as well.
Yes, actually, thank you for that as well. All right. One item that we didn't get to cover, and I know this is a, um, we're a little slow moving here, but I think it's important to note the lead service line inventory. That is, uh, due in October. That is mandated. I know people in the village have been hearing a lot about the lead service lines over the last couple of years. I think it started right after I joined, joined the board. I know the EAB has done a lot on lead service lines. I hope by this point, everyone in the village is well aware of a water service line coming into your home and that it could be of a different material and it could be lead and the dangers of having a lead service line. So, um, the EPA has mandated an inventory. Um, we sent out postcards and over 800 residents, um, went into their basement, took a picture of the line coming into their home and, and sent it to the village. So for those over 800 people, thank you, thank you, because that really helped us progress significantly in this inventory. And the next step that's being taken, and I believe it began today, it was scheduled to begin today, was the Water Department will be knocking on doors of homes. They have a list of suspected lead service lines and they'll be going to those homes and, um, asking to go in and take the picture. Now, if residents would rather not have someone come in, they can still do it themselves, take the picture. That's easier for us. But either way, if you're not comfortable doing that, um, they may be knocking on your door. So be on the lookout for that and thank you to everyone who's helping with this effort. All right. So at this point, um, we're moving rather slowly and we have a public hearing and I see in the back of the room. Actually, we have Chamber of Commerce, who I'm going to give you, uh, a couple of minutes for some quick comments. I know there's a big news on Seventh Street today. And then we're going to go to the public hearing because we have a presentation from our wonderful ADRV volunteers. So I might be getting tired back. We'll hear a quick comment from Mr. Wilton first, then we'll do the public hearing and then we'll get to citizen comments.
Good evening, then, Mayor, Trustees. Little housekeeping on your agenda tonight, representative approval of the 70th, the 70th tree lighting and the festival of lights. So if you so select to do so, we'll have that done. I have to take just a couple of minutes. I'll be as fast as I can and, and, and give you Cliff Notes on this. We have homecoming. So I spoke to the superintendent, I spoke to Mr. Blake, I spoke to the Commissioner. I met with the SEPTA PTA president and the PTA president. Uh, Judy called me. I just came back from vacation six hours ago, just to be here. And, um, she had called me and I'll coordinate with her. Uh, but the last real homecoming we had was really 2019. Tragic as that sounds, that's how long ago it was. Superintendent reached out to me and said, John, how can we get participation? Because in 2019, our parade consisted of Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Cub Scouts, Brownies, cheerleaders, okay? Uh, two children's clubs, one was Latin, one was Spanish. A vehicle with the 1970 graduates from the school, nine fire trucks, and it lasted seven minutes. So we're trying to come up conceptually with an idea how to get the community involved. That's why we met with the PTAs. So they're going to reach out to the Men's Association, they're going to reach out to the POAs, they're going to reach out to the Centennials and see if we can get it. All, I don't know where he is, Mr. Blake, was kind enough to say, John, you know what? We'll do, we'll do a nice flow. We'll, we'll do something that's creative and if we can get that synergy and energy going, maybe we can come up with it. Let me refresh everybody's memory because people's memories get distant. When we did the homecoming, typically we would have a choo-choo train that we rented. Okay. Unfortunately, they're out of business. Okay. We would have horses at the end of the block. We'd have a bouncy castle and things of that nature. If you remember COVID hit, then if you remember, I spoke to the Commissioner as well about this. Uh, the last one we had went from the middle school directly to the high school. It didn't come down Seventh Street. And then last year it rained. So we're, we're coming up, just so you understand, we're going to try to do it. So what may happen is, is that the school may do this if the village government so approves it and it will be done. Because the things that the chamber do, does typically, we may not be able to do. Also, this is the earliest homecoming we've ever had. It's, it's in six weeks. I mean, it's literally around the corner. Enough about the homecoming. We'll try to resolve it. I have more meetings scheduled. Anybody wants input? Judy, I'm glad you're back. I miss Jessica. I'm sure she'll be on it like white on rice. Okay? Noema did a pressure check. They, they, uh, they activated their water pressure system for their sprinkler system. So they pressure checked it, they drained it two times, they passed the test. So that's moving along.
I'm sorry, John, that was.
Okay. So hopefully soon. As you know, I was at the tap room today. They're expecting to come together in two weeks. I'm excited. Let's see what happens. Ivorone's a miracle. Okay. We have, if, if you haven't gone into it today, it's absolutely spectacular. Pat, the matriarch of the family, and I met, I mentioned Vinnie Muldoon's fine accent and the Italian and the Irish accents. And be that as it may, remember Key Food just upgraded itself. Although we embrace the success of Ivorone, we still have a vital downtown and we have to remember, okay? There's a, there's the initial honeymoon, but we have to keep the vitality of our downtown going. And as I said, now, the, um, uh, Vinnie did send me a memo. We do need to rewrap the lights with strand lighting on Seventh Street. The summer's almost over, fall is coming. We should really focus on that.
John, just so you know, I talked to Paul on that. They ordered new lights. That was the delay. So they ordered all new lights for those poles and they said, as soon as they come in, they're going to install them.
Right.
So that's the update.
The Adelfi is putting up, the reason the Adelfi sent you, Kelly, the, the post, I'm sorry, the banners for the pole, is it's tied into the ring ceremony for the men's lacrosse team, winning the eighth national championship. So they're going to make this a rather big event, which is going to include the village as well. So I think it's something that we have to embrace and really, you know, kind of, kind of embellish as best we can as trustees, as mayor, as the Chamber of Commerce. Also, the hotel is still planning their anniversary, their 200, 150th anniversary, uh, in October, which I'll keep you abreast of. They're doing it in-house. I'm only going to be involved after they get all the facts and lined up and everything, but I'll let you know how it goes. This is a reflection of information. This is not an opinion. Okay? The casino, the sands is supplementing, okay? Other chambers of commerce's events by covering the cost of those events. So they're supplementing the chambers who would normally have to use their own funding from dues and sponsorship. And they're paying to offset that so that they're facilitating the other chambers, supporting their mission of what they want to do. On the Friday nights, the interns that I have have gotten themselves into the private TikTok accounts. And what they're saying, which is good for us as a community, is what they're saying is, is that there is a constant, uh, input on the TikTok at the different levels that the police presence has increased significantly. So perhaps when the schools open and things happen and sports begin, et cetera, et cetera, that'll happen. I can go on. That concludes my report. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Wilton.
Best question, John.
Thanks, sir.
Which chambers are they supplementing, uh, sands?
I believe Levittown. No, I don't, I know, I know Levittown. I know Uniondale. I think Hempstead as well. I'm not certain. They, I know there was some speculation on Hempstead, but they're actually funding them with money to offset the carry cost of whatever events they're running. They offered to supplement us. I turned it down.
Thank you for doing that.
John, one quick thing, I was in Ivorone brothers and, uh, number one, it's a great family business. I didn't realize they grew up in town and the whole connection with Garden City. And, uh, it was pretty entertaining, the Irish guys talking to the Italian guys. Neither one of us understood each other most of the time, but they're, they're great people and it's an amazing place. So.
Thank you very much.
And it's great to see Key, uh, Key Food, uh, paint their building and, uh, take another step up on.
Well, it's funny, I'll, I'll, just real quick, everybody said, well, Key Food just did that. I said, no, no, Key Food, how long ago did Key Food file for this? 18 months ago? You know, so I said, no, it just so happened to coincide with the opening. One had nothing to do with the other.
That's great.
But there's money to be spent around the whole.
Love it.
All right. Thank you. So at this point, I'm going to move the public hearing up. Um, I want to. I want to thank the volunteers on the ADRB and in particular, James Bauer and Celia Peterson are going to join us and give a brief presentation and explain the reason they have come to recommend these amendments to the solar panel law and thank you so much for your work. First of all, do we have a motion to open the public meeting? All in favor? The public meeting is open, we'll begin with, I'm sorry, public hearing is open. And we'll begin, if you want to, just so we have in the record your name and address.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, trustees, members of the public. My name is Celia Peterson, I am the Chair of the Architectural Design Review Board. We saw a need for revisions to the code for solar energy systems. All seven members of the ADRB participated in making those revisions, thinking about it and really studying the issue. So, I thank all the members of the board for their participation. Tonight, I'm here, James Bauer and Lynn Krug. We represent the Architectural Design Review Board. So, what spurred this is that in the solar industry, the technology and the performance has improved a lot. It's more affordable and there are tax incentives. And as a result of that, the number of solar applications that we are seeing at the Architectural Design Review Board has increased tremendously. We see two to four applications average every month. And a lot of the applications are lacking information, lacking detail, making it difficult for us to make a decision. Many times, we have to go out to the site just to see the situation. So, you know, because our mandate is to preserve the beauty of Garden City and we're responsible for aesthetics. We want to maintain the code currently says that it shouldn't be visible from the street. So, we rewrote the code so that they have to submit photographs from specific places in the street so that it's a streamlined process where we can review it and it's standardized. So, everybody is treated equally, the solar companies know what our expectations are and they can prepare a application to do that. So, that's the reasons why we rewrote it and we basically left that most of the time, it's going, the solar array will be in the rear of the house so that it is not visible from the street. I'm going to invite James up to present all the details of the changes that we made. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will next sort of walk through relatively briefly the proposed changes, which are, I believe, in everyone's packets. So, we'll do that and then we've got a presentation or slides to illustrate some of the technologies that come along with it. So, let me run through it. The first point is that if you look at the current law, it was updated in 2004. So, it's twenty years out of date and as Celia said, the technology has changed dramatically and the demand has changed. If you go to Section A, the purpose, we added some language to to expand the number of, or the panels or the solar shingles that we look at to those that exist in the entire village, not just as the law was initially defined as appropriate for the intended location. So, we're moving from just the specific location to looking at panels or shingles that are in the entire village. The next piece moving down is a term that was not defined, so we're defining it now, which is abutting streets. And that's used throughout the revised code, but it's basically the streets that adjoin the houses. And the fundamental premise that we're talking about is that we do not want the solar panels to be seen from abutting streets. And as Celia said, that's to preserve the existing beauty of Garden City. We do have, as we go through the rest of the document, we do have lots of alternatives that don't in any way discriminate people from having solar panels on their homes. Okay? Now, we've defined a couple of other things. The first is integrated primary equipment, okay? And this is important. These are the newer technologies, which are solar shingles. If you think about solar panels now, and I'll show you a picture in a minute, those are the big bulky panels with occasionally aluminum frames around them that are probably about four feet wide by three feet wide high. The solar shingles look exactly like current roof shingles so that they can be put down on a roof and look exactly like existing shingles. So, that gets us around the attractiveness issue. The downside, not yet, the downside of these is that it's a newer technology, they're more expensive and they require greater expertise in installation. But we've looked at what the costs are going forward and they're likely to come down in the next ten years, like any new technology, not to the same point that solar panels will come down, but still in a more reasonable area. So, that's what we call integrated primary equipment. The next is non-integrated primary equipment and these are the traditional solar panels, right? That everyone's familiar with. And you can see the aesthetic differences, right? They're not lying flat against the roof. They come in big panels, they can't fit nicely and neatly on the existing roof. And you'll see in a minute, we're going to give examples of things we don't want in Garden City to illustrate the points. So, that's non-integrated primary equipment. The other piece is secondary equipment, and that's the way it's defined. These are the various electronic systems, panels, inverters and so on that are associated with the solar equipment, okay? And ultimately, we don't want them to appear on the outside unless it's necessary for fire or security. We want them to be inside the house, okay? The next thing is sort of Regulation C tilted frames where they're. One more, please. It's tilted frames. There are buildings that have flat roofs where one would mount the solar panels on flat roofs. We have a provision in the existing code that they should not be visible from abutting streets and it be screened. And the reason I'm pointing this out to you is that two or three months ago, we approved the solar panels on the top of the Adelphi Center for Recreation and Sports and they already had screening on the top. So, it was a very easy decision to make to approve it and they understood, you know, the tilted frames, okay? Could I just go back to the previous one? What we don't want, right, is, and this is illustrated, is non-matching panels, okay? Tiles or slates. And non-matching in this particular example is the color of the roof clearly doesn't match the color of the panels and the panels are not, are sort of jumbled around, they're not arranged in a consistent pattern. So, we'll come to how we approach that later. So, just to continue, that integrated equipment, and I'm reading here from paragraph six, integrated equipment, which are the shingles, can be mounted on a roof, okay? If it resembles, integrates and blends seamlessly with the overall aesthetics and architecture of the structure. So, there's no question that with the Tesla-like solar shingles, we would approve them. The next thing is, and that's just to make the point, that the non-integrated equipment should be parallel to the roof and not visible from an abutting street. So, these are examples that we don't want. And what's interesting, the houses on the left are in a neighboring community. I would say less than, without naming names, less than a hundred yards from Garden City. And that's one street in that community where literally every house has panels like that. So, again, that's something that we don't want. The next one, right, is that, and this is point seven here, non-integrated equipment added to an existing structure should be parallel to it and located in an area of the roof that's not visible from an abutting street. So, the example on the left is a solar panels, right? One unit, in other words, individual modules must be arranged as a single integrated unit centered on the roof section and substantially covering the entire roof. So, that's the example on the left. And what we don't want, what we're guarding against is something on the right. Again, same thing, okay? Now, the other things that we don't have pictures for, one, we're changing the process so that the applications first go to the building department to make sure that all of the material is there. And the reality is that a lot of the applications are generated by the solar companies who are clearly interested in getting it through the process and getting a sale quickly. So, they were often missing a lot of equipment, a lot of information. And then, and this is in the packet, we're changing the process or we're making the process a little bit more stringent in terms of how we request photographs. So, what we're asking for is, and it's in the packet, five photographs taken of the house in question from the street. Now, here's the street, one, two, three, four, five, at the midpoint of the street. So, we would get photographs. And just to go back to a discussion earlier about bushes and shrubs interfering with it, we've had a whole series of photographs presented to us where there are bushes and trees impacting the view. And sometimes I think deliberately impacting the view so that we can't, you know, we can't see what the panels are like. So, this is what we're asking for from a house that's, it's a mid-block house. And then finally, on the last page, the corner properties are even trickier because there are two abutting streets facing them. So, that's the perspective that, you know, the photographs that we would want from houses that are on the corner. And this does not preclude certainly panels on the roofs that are not visible from the abutting streets. And to the extent that a person elects to use the solar shingles, they can certainly have them on the, you know, on the roofs facing the abutting streets. So, that's basically all the changes that we're asking for. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Thank you, this is an excellent presentation.
Just to comment as the liaison to the ADRB, I know they've been working on this, I don't know, probably close to a year at this point.
About eighteen months.
Yeah, yeah, and I have learned as I sit through those meetings, I'm surprised pleasantly, actually, but the number of solar panel requests that you all get and Giuseppe has to review them all as well. So, there's a lot of work involved in this. And just to know that we appreciate, I think, putting the more stringent requirements on this may, you know, make the residents or the solar panel companies, you know, feel like there's a little bit more bureaucracy. But I think in the long run, it'll really streamline the process. They won't have to come back, it'll be a better experience for residents who are trying to get a fairly significant investment done and it'll make your job easier. So, kudos to you guys, good work on this, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to second that amazing job going through all this and it certainly needed to be updated from the differences in twenty years and the solar world is just out of this world. And it's only going to continue, especially with Elon Musk doing his things with the Tesla panels. But listen, solar in the right application is fantastic. I just got to make sure it doesn't impact the beauty of our village, which you guys are working hard to do. And I certainly, I think I talked for the entire board, we appreciate all your hard work and diligence and really appreciate you doing this, so thank you so much, appreciate it.
Do we have anyone in the room with a comment for the public hearing?
I just have a question, James, do we, like as a village, can we recommend different solar contractors that we prefer? Or is that like taboo?
Absolutely not. And that comes up, just as an aside, that comes up other times when another project comes to us and for one reason or another, we have to comment on it or reject it. We're very careful about not making any recommendation one way or the other. And we have, I think, four architects on the board who'd love to do that, but they hold themselves back.
Okay, we have a comment in the room? Sure, there's a request to bring up the photo with the orange roof. Any comments on the amendment? Thank you, yes. If you want to come up to the microphone and say your name and address, please, so it's on the record. And in case it wasn't caught, we just had a comment on an environmental issue shown in the picture.
Steve Alardi Meadow Street, just wondering, does the fire department have any comment on how the solar panels on the roof may affect fighting fires or any issues with that, any concerns?
Sure.
Just like any other electrical piece of equipment, we do have to use caution. They do have shut offs for the fire department, we're able to access them. And we have to keep in mind that they are electrically charged, so we will not be operating around them.
Anything with venting roofs or, I mean, I would think you can't vent the roof the same way if the panels are on? Is that any concern?
If the situation dictated that we need to open up the roof, we would have to find alternate means.
Okay.
If you can just come up to the microphone, I'm sorry, in case anyone's watching online so they can hear you.
If you go back, if you look at the bottom left panel, you'll see that the panels do not completely cover the roof. Those spaces right at the bottom around all four sides are ultimately for access should you need to get into the attic.
There's a three-foot access around the entire area of the roof plus an eighteen-inch requirement on both sides of the ridge as PECO compliant. So, we do screen the applications as they come in, PECO compliance. And we've turned down numerous amount of applications where we received, so we pre-screen the applications.
Thank you. Any other comments in the room? Any comments on Zoom on the local law amendment? I don't see any. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing? All in favor? All right, so that the public hearing is closed. And do we have a motion to amend a local law or to amend the local law, Chapter two hundred, Article seven, Section two hundred dash forty-five point three regarding supplementary use regulations for solar energy systems? All in favor? That passed unanimously, thank you very much to the board for all of your work on this. All right, so we'll go back up on the agenda. Are there any trustee comments or announcements to make before we go to the resident comments on agenda items?
I'd like to make a couple of comments on trustee Finnern's previous comments in regards to some of those articles. St. Paul's is a very important part of this village, in my view. But it's certainly not in any way, shape or form the defining part of this village. Like Ed said, the people are, the villages, the history is, the schools are, sports programs are, the religion institutions are, you name it. So, Ed, I agree with you one thousand percent that, again, we have an amazing village here. Reason why we're sitting up here, I think, all of us, is to try and make it a better place and see what we can do to improve it and hand it off to the next generation of trustees and mayor. And again, I'm a firm believer in saying how great the village is and, yes, do we have some? And yes, do we have some issues? Do we, do we need to make a lot of things better in this village? The answer is yes. Okay? But you know what? We should be very proud of this village and we should talk this village up. And I know from 30-plus years of seeing all these different generations of young people moving into their homes and having the privilege to meet them and work for a lot of them, that it's an amazing, amazing group of, of just amazing people that move into this village. And we should be very proud of our village and, and talk it up. And I completely agree with your, your opening conversation, Ed. And thank you very much for that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That's a good point about young families. Seems to be a good number of residents that grew up here and then come back and raise their families in. So I think that says a lot.
It's a great place. I think we, we can all agree on that. That's why we're here. All right. Any other trustee comments?
I was just gonna say, I had a couple of comments that were pulled from the discussion a few times, but due to advice of council, we'll discuss it as a group that has my concerns.
All right, so we'll move now to citizen comments on agenda items. Anyone in the room with a citizen comment on an agenda item?
Steve Gray from the Western Territory, Cambridge Avenue. Good afternoon, members of the board. As a resident of the West, since February 4th, 1977, I am well acquainted with the Edgmere Firehouse. I was a member of the Western POA Committee for or regarding the Western Firehouse back in 2019. So I am somewhat familiar, not in the capacity of a fireman, an engineer or an architect, but as someone who visited the building with that committee. We got a tour and Bob Buller Bush and John Delaney, two trustees, with us at the time. There are certainly a lot of challenges to be faced when figuring out what to do with this building. But it is four years since I took that tour roughly. This is a building that is important to the safety of the entire village, especially the West. One of my favorite songs is from the Chambers Brothers is called "Time Has Come." Now the time has come, it's time to realize, time has come today. Time has come today to get this done. It is an important building for the safety of the entire village. I am aware that it is a triangular plot. I am aware that the bays are too small for some of the modern equipment, that the equipment now is heavier, taller, wider, that the current bays make it difficult for the firemen to work on the equipment when it is inside. So there are challenges in terms of how, how you place the bays, what is the building to look like? You want it to somewhat look like the building now, but you can't replicate it. You just can't. So we have a balance of aesthetics because people in the West like me, we point, oh, you make a left on Edgmere, right where, one of the trustees is nodding, right? Where Stewart is, that's how you get to that section of town. But if we can't replicate it exactly, we have to compromise between the two, but essential is to get it done quickly, cost efficiently, so that the firemen can be comfortable using it for the purposes that it is required to be needed. After all, this was a carriage house. It's converted to a firehouse. So there are many challenges that to be faced engineering and architecturally, but please let us now get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we all, we're all in agreement. Well said, yep. Yes, Mr. Alardi?
Steve Alardi Meadow Street, regarding items 10 and 21 about Adelphi, they're asking for $710 more for the extra rehearsal hours. And I find it ironic on the same agenda that they're asking to use 14 of our light poles for 741 days to put their banners up to advertise for their school. So if we charge them seven cents a day for those poles for the 741 days, it'll be a wash. So I know you're talking about $25,000 and all, and, and they really have the nerve to come to us for another $710 and then ask that use our light poles to advertise for their school. I don't know what one year's tuition is for a student there, 40,000, 50, 60? And they're offering 25,000 back in the day when they used to pay it. So maybe we start at the one-year tuition level, not even four years' worth. Let's start at the one year. And maybe we tell them and discuss the light pole thing before we approve it tonight. And maybe we don't put the banners on and support them for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments on agenda items in the room? Any citizen comments on agenda items on Zoom?
I would like to speak, Bob Wolf.
Yes, Mr. Wolf.
Hi, how are you? I figured I'd come home and work from my desk. I came prepared a lot of things to present tonight. Number one, does anybody have any idea what the Western Firehouse is going to cost? I noticed $5 million in this year's budget. Is that, are we talking $10 million? We're talking, where are we going? Anywhere near that number?
So at this point, that's, the trustees, there have been some different groups meeting, and I'm planning to have a meeting next week. The plans we have are coming estimated at a high number, so we're going to be looking to get those into a more reasonable range. So we don't really want to give a number now, but we're aware of-
Substantially more, it's a sufficient answer. The other thing, I'll stick to agenda items. On the agenda items that mentioned Irene giving a treasurer's report, did not hear a treasurer's report when I was there.
Are you talking about the last meeting?
This one here, that's right there. Comment by department heads including treasurer or treasurer's report. Is there a treasurer's report?
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf, yeah, it's hard to understand you. Could you maybe not talk so close to the-
Sure, I'll slow down a little bit also.
I think the, we heard the treasurer's report. I think your question as to whether there was a treasurer's report.
Item five calls for a treasurer's-
I couldn't hear that.
Item five calls for a treasurer's report.
Item five?
Yeah.
Yes, that is comments and department heads, village administrator and council on agenda items, and it says in parentheses, including treasurer on treasurer's report. I believe that's standard in our agenda, and we did hear a report from Ms. Wu today as we do at all our meetings.
I expect to listen, I think it's a financial information possibly. I know I'm not gonna get full financial information, but are we ahead of budget? We below budget?
Right. I think he's asked, Bob, tell me, it's Judy, if, if, I think what you're asking is, is the quote treasurer's report a formal report of sort of the state of the financials of the village?
I would like to get what the trustees get. And the trustees get nothing. I would be embarrassed to hear that. Are the trustees supplied any financial information during the course of the year?
Mr. Wolf, I, I believe that a treasurer does from time to time provide an update, a public update in one of the BOT meetings on, on the current state of affairs of the, of the budget and of, and of various other items. So it was not tonight, it was not tonight, Mr. Wolf. I think the last one was a couple of months ago.
With the figures as of the end of the fiscal year, which was May 31st. For 90 days past that now, and I have no idea-
We're having difficulty. I'm gonna suggest that you send an email to Ms. Wu and copy the rest of the board on it as to what in particular you're looking for, and we can address it at the next meeting because we're having difficulty hearing you.
Mr. Wolf, this is Michelle, and I actually had put a call in this week with Irene and Ms. Wu and with trustee Finneran about getting together with you and Mr. Hers to discuss some of your concerns. I know I promised it back in the spring, and I plan on following up with that. And Irene was very gracious and has her schedule open, so we will be in contact with you about getting together for coffee or tea at one of the restaurants in town and talking about some stuff, and we can address some of your concerns and see what you'd like to have discussed with you.
Thank you very much.
So we will follow up with you. Is that all right?
Thank you very much, yes.
All right, thank you. Any other comments on Zoom on agenda items?
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
That's Mr., oh, Mr. Oros. Oh, yep, if you can state your name and address.
Yes, Bob Oros, 28 Grove. I'm looking at the, at item 13 about the new, the new architectural engineering report for firehouse number two. I sort of looked into, into the past studies. Apparently, we've been, we've been hiring engineering and architectural firms since 2017, and I have yet to see a, a viable report pertaining to what we should do with that building. And yet, we're going year after year or whatever, I mean, this is seven years now since 2017. Third architectural and, and engineering firm, and yet I, I don't know what the results of any of the past studies were pertaining to that building and certainly the cost of it. Does anyone comment on, on any of the past reports? Anyone ever read one of the past reports?
Could you specify what your question is about? You basically have a building that has been looked at over a period of time. The boards have changed over, but we have not had plans that were finalized to the point that they're able to go out for bid. It's only when the plans come back after going out for bid do we actually have what one would consider to be real numbers. Depending on what is the numbers that come in, there may or will have to be modifications to either the plans, the utility, or the options that we have. But at the present time, we do not have any numbers to give to you.
Well, the, the issue is, is that there has been past reports, in fact, I've looked at them along the diagrams and so on about the building or a possible extension of the building, approximately adding about 3,000 feet onto the building, or completely building a new firehouse. I mean, what, what happens? Does the administration, board members change and then we have to do it over again with someone else? It, it just doesn't seem to be any uniformity going forward.
I think, Mr. Oros, I think what you're referring to are some prior structural studies that were done, as has been raised here. There are some complicated issues with renovating this building to meet the needs of the fire department. And the structural report was much less, I believe they gave some ranges perhaps in that, but it was not nearly as specific as what we're working on now. Is that right, Mr. Givinelli?
Right.
So stay tuned. We, we realize, we understand that this has taken a long time. I live right there by it. I, I want it done too, and we're working on it.
That's why I've been asking Superintendent Givinelli every meeting for updates, and he's given them, and I think we're moving along.
Bob, let me chime in from a construction perspective. The one thing I would say, looking at where this thing started, I think, believe back in 2017, 2017, I'm pretty-
2017, yeah.
Can you hear me, Bob?
Yeah.
Yeah. I will say the amount of money that the village has spent overall in architectural fees and engineering fees on this project, to me, doesn't sit well with me. I think there's a lot of money been wasted here for different reasons. I certainly don't know the reasons why. I'm new to this board, but it's time for that to stop as soon as we can. So our plan here is to get these plans finalized, out to bid, let the bid come back in and see where they come back in. Right now, my view is it's going to come back in higher in regards to budget than we should spend in this building, and we're gonna have to reevaluate. But the one thing I can say for myself tonight is we're gonna make a decision here as soon as we can, and I'm certainly gonna push to, to make the decision with the rest of the board. The smartest way to renovate or get this firehouse back up and running without spending more and more money on architects and engineers, because to me, there's been too much money wasted. It's taken way too long. I get everybody has a different view on it, but it's time to actually get the job done and find a way to fit it in the budget. Not gonna get everything, not everybody is gonna get everything they want, but we can't continue to waste money on fees across the board over the next two or three or four years. On my watch, that will not happen. We're gonna have to figure this thing out and get it done for once and for all, so.
But I think, I think trustee Muldoon, we're closer, wouldn't you agree, with the, with the depth and the, and the seriousness of-
Oh, yeah, 100%.
No, we won't have to start over again.
Oh, no.
No.
No, but, but we will have to, once we get the bids back in, analyze it. And right now, based on, on the plans, it's going to be a high number that, in my view, just in my view, it's, 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 it's gonna come in higher than I think the, the village should spend on this building. We need to be able to find a way to get the building back up and running for the fire department and, and get it where we can renovate this building, do whatever we need to do with it to be able to get it back up and operational for Chief Taunton. And again, I know we talked about it, you know, something's gotta give because, you know, what you need to get, whatever you need to get to make this safe for your people who are working in the fire department and to, and especially for the people on the western side of the village. So we're gonna work hard on it and we're gonna find a way to get it done because it's been going on too long in my view, and it's time to-
And that's why I mentioned earlier, in fact, trustee Muldoon, you had said the, the recent year or so that the architect has had is not out of the realm of, okay, all right.
All right. So any other comments on, from Zoom on agenda items?
Robert Vassalotti, 32 Berxton Road. Good evening, everyone. Yes, I have a comment on the firehouse as well, and I think that it involves a little bit more transparency to the residents and taxpayers in that we see the design. I know we're thinking about putting things out to bid, but it would be nice to see some PowerPoint images presented at a board meeting so we all know what's being built. And I think it involves all residents of the town who drive past and who are familiar with the building. We should be able to see, you know, what's coming our way. Many of us were surprised by the elevator towers at Merrillon, which looked nothing like what was presented to us by the railroad. So the least we can do is to share the design with the residents. Now, the next item I have is on Adelphi, and I have spoken about this at the podium before, and I agree with some of the comments that have been made by other residents. But if I was going to have a meeting with Adelphi on this issue, I'd wanna have like 10 years of numbers in front of me, audited numbers. You know, what have they paid? When have they paid it? When didn't they pay it over the last 10 years? Irregardless of COVID and things like that. But, you know, what's been paid? What's in abeyance or owed to us? And then also including that, the number of homes that they are occupying in town and have purchased, and I believe they're not paying taxes on those homes. So I'd like to see that in an audit. How many homes? What are the, what are the tax expense that's off the tax rolls? And then how many fire calls and what that expense is? But a full audit and reporting that's public, made public by year in total. And I agree that the fee should go up dramatically, because I gotta tell you that all those buses parked in the community park over there by the pool is really quite unsightly. And I also imagine that the average person that drives by thinks, oh, look, isn't that interesting? That's a part of the Adelphi campus. Well, it's not. It's our community park, which you can't- It's our community park, which you can't even see anymore because buses are blocking it that advertise Adelphi. So I just think it's really important to solidify this issue. It's been going on for years. And I agree with Mr., I think it was Mr. Alardi who spoke about this $700 difference here, which was kind of ridiculous. So again, I think we really need to tighten this one up and make sense of it very quickly. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I think we have another comment on Zoom on agenda items? Is that it? There's a hand up there. Okay, all right. So that concludes citizen comments and agenda items. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I'm sorry, just to respond to Mr. Vassalotti, I just want to be clear that the plans, et cetera, that you spoke about at the firehouse, certainly, I mean, we can, you know, people have, we can figure out how people could see what's in them. Those plans have not been decided. So I just want to be clear that that is very, we are very much still in a review and kind of determination of what we're going to do there. But I know your, your comment was that, you know, you want to know what we've decided. And we have not decided anything in terms of design or what's going to be built there.
That's true, but I don't disagree with the idea of sharing this. We're going along, so I, I think we'll be looking into doing something like that. So, all right, do we have a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of July 25th? All in favor? That passes. Do we have a motion to approve the special meeting minutes of August 5th, 2024? All in favor? One abstention? Okay. And do we have a motion to approve the special meeting of August 6th, 2024? All in favor? And one abstention?
I'm sorry, there was, I'm abstaining on the 25th. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, so. You're.
I was there on the 25th, not on the.
But not special. Okay, so just based on the discussion tonight and some interaction up here, I think it's wise, before we approve the consent calendar with these issues with St. Paul, with Adelphi, I'm not sure why it was two years of flags being put up. We'll do it for a year and have further discussion on that. So I'm going to propose that we amend that from August 21st, 2024 till September 1st of 2025, which gives the full school year. Anyone disagree with that or have a comment on it? Okay. All right, so at this point, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar with number eight deleted and with an amendment to number 21 to conclude September 1st, 2025 rather than 2026? All in favor? And that passes all seven. All right, and we'll move now to citizen comments on non-agenda items. Any in the room?
Sure, I'll go first.
Non-agenda.
Still at Cambridge Avenue since a couple of minutes ago. I think this is a non-agenda item. There were comments by two of the trustees concerning the fate of the St. Paul School Building. And so as a result, I agree somewhat with trustee Muldoon's comments about, yeah, we have a great village. I wouldn't be here if I didn't care about the village. And I wouldn't be here if I thought the village sucked. So with that in mind, I wanted to read something from St. Paul's Public Opinion Poll. Frequently asked questions. Number one, why is the village having an opinion poll on October 21st? Saturday, St. Paul's Public Opinion Poll is intended to help the Board of Trustees understand if there is community support for continued efforts to save part or all of the building or whether the majority of residents want the building demolished. Getting this information from residents is only the first step for the BOT in reaching a decision on the St. Paul's building. And it is understood that regardless of what we learn, more will, more work will need to be done. The preliminary cost estimates are provided to give residents an idea of the costs of different projects and the impact that bonding a project would have on their village tax bill over a period of years. The two options on the ballot are preservation, full or partial, and demolition. Consequently, I tend to lean towards what trustee Muldoon said, but respectfully disagree with Mr. Fitterin that saving the building, which seems to imply the whole building is a done deal, I would respectfully disagree with because we do not have the results of the first survey, nor do we even have out the second survey. And I think the residents need to be heard on those matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you. Andrew D. Schumel, the Garden City. First, a quick comment on those chemtrails. They are killing the planet. Bees are dying in abundance, and they are amazing creatures. Did you know the bee, the bumblebee can levitate? Those little wings are just for navigation. It actually defies gravity. It's figured out something, and it can actually levitate. Okay, so they're dying as well. And dogs. Mayor, how do you feel about dogs being restrained or dragged by their leash? Does this make you feel good? A dog is a running machine. Okay, it makes me feel sick, okay? Imagine putting a squirrel or a sparrow on our harness and our leash. I mean, it's unthinkable, but that's what goes on. Seventh Street, I mean, nothing, I don't mean to insult, but it's dumber and dumber. Now, this is what I observe all the time, but this particular incident really had me offended. A dog lifted its leg, took a pee on the flower pot less than 12 inches from where a mom was sitting with her two little kids having a snack. First, the community spot, Seventh Street, is utilized as a doggy toilet. Then it is frequented by undesirables. First one, and then the other. It happens all over the place, okay? Village allows the standard to be lowered, and that's what's happening, okay? The Coliseum. Whose side is Bruce Blakeman on, okay? He is the linchpin. Attack him, okay? If you're not satisfied with his responses, impeach him, okay? This casino, that's the crack in the dam, okay? Then you're going to get low-income housing, going to get new schools, all subsidized, taxes plus traffic, plus crime goes up, up, up. And, I mean, I don't know if you're aware of the monster housing projects going on in Hempstead right now? They are huge. And they got that academy school when they let out thousands and thousands of kids pour out of that thing, okay? And none of them were white, okay? Three. Did you get my June 27, 24 letter to Paul F. Colahan? Did I mailed it to you? Did you get it?
I'm not commenting on any of your letters.
Not commenting on any of my letters, okay? This may be the most important letter ever written, okay? When you consider the Middle East wars, when you consider the Russian-Ukraine wars, when you consider how the United States is being pushed into bomb Iran, you had better consider that letter again, especially now. The most important letter ever written. Okay. Oh, other than Randy Cole, other than left-handed Randy Colahan, the library chair, have you come up with a single person to testify why I should be banned from the library?
Not commenting on that, but you can continue.
Mr. Gary Fishburg might recall that on the meeting where I was banned, Gary Fishburg was right there, and we were close. I was practically sitting on his lap. I mean, we were like very, very close, okay? I had to argue with Randy Colahan for 45 minutes just to find out what I was being accused of. He violated his oath of office. He violated New York State federal constitution, and he gets applauded by this board. That's crazy. I continue to pursue my civil suit against the village. Can you know about that? The Ryan T. McDarmid arrest, Lori Ann arrest, the Brian Ridgway exist, the Mary Pierpoint exist, the Jane McCann tickets, and the Chris Friedo arrest, okay?
Right, so you're above, you're beyond the four minutes if you can wrap it up.
Okay, well, with all of these, gee whiz, even with, even though all these letters, even though these letters from me about these matters were sent to mayor and board, you may want to submit a FOIA request to the Garden City PD to get copies because I need you to, I want, to clear my conscience, I want you to make an informed decision whether or not you're going to grant my request because otherwise.
Yes, we're approaching five minutes. Thank you for your comments.
Thanks, thank you.
Are there any other comments in the room on non-agenda items?
Thank you.
All right, so any other, any other comments in the room on non-agenda items? I see none. Anything on Zoom? Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting? All in favor? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Thank you, everyone.